The inflow infiltration in the median area was not the cause, so that's what made us spread out. We have to go backward and do the smoke test and find out where is all this coming from? So that's where we're at, and I think we've got a good handle on that. But the engineer needs to kind of take all of that data and put it into a work program that we can supply the DQ for corrective action.
Go ahead.
I think he already answered it. There wasn't a very large percentage of inflow coming from residential sewers? Or that hasn't been proven yet?
Well, I guess the question is define large. It is certainly not the majority of what we can perceive from the smoke test. I don't think that the majority of the inflow is coming from residential. I think the majority is coming from the manholes. But I can't go so far as to say we don't have a problem with residential. I think we did find some that were having issues. But that, what is happening, I'll put it this way. What is happening at the residential level of inflow infiltration could not be enough to cause the bypasses that is the real issue in the person in the complaint in this yard.
I know that was a concern of Mike's, you know, before we started that the flow that was coming from residential. Thank you.
As I recall, it seems that y'all have done a great job, especially with the limited resources, to keep us on top and out of being fined. We're not subject to fine yet, are we?
No.
And so I move that we go forward with this consideration.
Second.
Roll call, CJ.
Dee Patterson?
Yes.
Chris Anderson?
Yes.
Bill Wollman?
Yes.
Cory Crabtree?
Yes.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Jeff Griffin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
We entertain a motion for adjournment?
So.
Second.
All those here?
Aye.
All right, with that, we'll move on to the Seminole City Council meeting. Roll call, Jay.
Chris Anderson?
Here.
Dee Patterson?
Here.
Stephanie Lambert?
Here.
Larry Church?
Sure.
Tim Poplin?
Here.
Bill Wollman?
Here.
Cory Crabtree?
Here.
John Kramer? Jeff Griffin?
Here.
We have a forum.
Please stand for the first allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Et sanguine misga hongri giodai, mokasabse kuiche de madol moment portolofa seminoli, mon poestia mogen, idin okajigis, wachimisagade misiha agaskas. God whose mercies cannot be numbered except our prayer of thanks for the city of Seminole and for all our people. Let us love one another, for you are love. Amen.
Consideration and action of consent agenda?
Move to approve. Second.
Roll call, please.
Chris Anderson?
Yes.
Dee Patterson?
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Bill Wollman?
Yes.
Cory Crabtree?
Yes.
Motion passes.
We have elections and appointments. Consideration and possible action to approve the following mayoral board appointments. Ken Green to the planning commission through June of two thousand and twenty-two. Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Chris Anderson?
Yes.
Dee Patterson?
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Bill Wollman?
Yes.
Cory Crabtree?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Michelle Downey to the planning commission through June two thousand and twenty-two. Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Chris Anderson?
Yes.
Dee Patterson?
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Bill Wollman?
Yes.
Cory Crabtree?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Ken Green to the...
You, we don't need a roll call on them, but we do need them separate.
Okay.
So we can do...
Ken Green to the board of adjustments through June of two thousand and twenty-two.
So move. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Steve Shobbs to the board of adjustments through June two thousand and twenty-two. Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Shevelin Fouts to the urban renewal authority through July two thousand and twenty-two. Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Michelle Snead to the urban renewal authority through July two thousand and twenty-two.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Micah Baker to the lake board through June two thousand and twenty-two. Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And, did I say twenty twenty?
He said twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty. And if we need to make that change.
We still have it.
Okay. Lanny Reener to the park board. Lanny Reener to the park board. And there's no timeframe on that, no date. You need a date on it?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a three-year term, I believe.
Brian Adams.
Should be a three-year term.
Okay. Or three-year term. To approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Do we have any appearances or petitions from the audience for the Seminole city councils? Mr.?
Hi, my name's Stephanie Davis. I'm new to the area. Thanks for letting me come and be a part of this community. I wanted to see, there have been a lot of talks about the Seminole swimming pool and what the options are going to be for that. And I know we're going to cover that a little bit here today. But I wanted to see if the council might be opening, open to appointing a citizen committee that might be able to assist with you guys. I've got lots of ideas as far as fundraising goes, naming rights, and some other options that we might be able to explore prior to raising taxes. And so I just wanted to see if you guys would be open to that. And if so, obviously, I'm happy to volunteer to lead that. I've in fact got about five or six other citizens that are on board already to help me with the committee. So just wanted to plant that seed because we definitely want to help you guys and try to minimize the tax hikes that you have to make on everyday citizens.
I would just ask that maybe get with Sharon and give her your phone number, so right here. Sharon's right here.
Oh, okay.
So that way we would have your contact information.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that the mayor appoints such a committee.
I think we have one.
Do we have one?
But more than mayor here, I mean.
Then that we can accept the membership of this lady and the people that she has recruited and go forward from there.
So we'll need to put that on the list.
Actually, I think that, I think the mayor can appoint an advisory committee anyway, at the mayor's discretion. But anybody that wants to be a part of that can just...
So you could get me listed.
Okay, I'm going to do that. Your time.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on to approvals and acceptance systems. Bids. Item one, consideration and possible action to approve declaring in nineteen eighty-seven Ford LTD bid number three five five two as a surplus. Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, Jay.
Chris Anderson?
Yes.
Dee Patterson?
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Bill Wollman?
Yes.
Cory Crabtree?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item two, consideration and possible action to approve the sole bid of nineteen thousand three hundred forty-eight dollars from All American Carpet and Tile for new flooring at the community room as budgeted in the fiscal year two thousand and eighteen nineteen capital improvement projects.
Move to approve. Second.
Roll call, please.
Chris Anderson?
Yes.
Dee Patterson?
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Bill Wollman?
Yes.
Cory Crabtree?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, resolutions. Consideration and possible action to approve resolution number two thousand and nineteen dash oh six. The resolution declaring May as community action month for the city of Seminole. Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Chris Anderson?
Yes.
Dee Patterson?
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Bill Wollman?
Yes.
Cory Crabtree?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Ordnances. Item four, consideration and possible action to approve ordinance number one two two nine and ordinance rezoning five forty-five West Strather from R two to family residential to C one commercial.
I have a question for Steve. Has that been brought through the planning commission or the board of adjustments?
Planning commission, yes.
Okay.
I move to approve. I know they've done their homework on it. Second.
Roll call, please.
Chris Anderson?
Yes.
Dee Patterson?
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Bill Wollman?
Yes.
Cory Crabtree?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Under current business, item five, consideration and possible action to approve a transfer of funds in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars from the Series two thousand and fifteen AB revenue bonds to the Seminole Urban Renewal Authority as budgeted in the fiscal year two thousand and eighteen nineteen capital improvements project.
Move to its approval. Second.
Roll call, please.
Chris Anderson?
Yes.
Dee Patterson?
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Bill Wollman?
Yes.
Cory Crabtree?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item six, consideration and possible action to approve the work order not to exceed thirty-three thousand eight hundred twenty dollars to be paid based on percent complete of services proposed for wall engineering for the design and bidding of the two proposed roundabouts on Bourne Boulevard and East Broadway. This is an unbudgeted item to be funded from revenue series bond proceeds.
So what will they be, what will they do? Is this where you were talking about, we need to have someone to do the soil testing and that sort of stuff?
Yes, this is the actual construction design of the roundabouts.
Does that include everything on the roundabout?
No, sir. This is the, just the traffic barrier type event. This does not include any public art that might be placed on top of it, nothing like that. This is just getting the structure built.
Just curious, because I have a strong interest in local artists putting together some designs for our consideration. We have an excellent opportunity. I know she's my ex-wife, so it's difficult for me to be criticized for saying good things about her because... But she is a superb artist and she teaches at Seminole State. And we have a fine lady who is our, who is teaching art at the high school. And I think that if we got those folks working together, we could draw in some, a good project.
Jay, let the minutes reflect. He's advocating for his ex-wife.
She's a wonderful person and a fantastic artist. And she specializes in large sculptures.
Oh, cool. Won't get to steal some of those horse sculptures from Sean.
She might put sculpture of you up there, Larry.
Well, not that. I'd hate to see that.
They turn around, they wouldn't go through.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Chris Anderson?
Yes.
Dee Patterson?
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Bill Wollman?
Yes.
Cory Crabtree?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item seven, consideration and possible action to approve renewing the annual public works contract with Silver Star Construction, which includes a two point four percent consumer price index adjustment over the prior year.
Move to approval.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Chris Anderson?
Yes.
Dee Patterson?
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Bill Wollman?
Yes.
Cory Crabtree?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item eight, consider action, consideration and possible action to approve the purchase of two thousand and nine BMW motorcycle at a cost of four thousand one hundred dollars for use by the Seminole Police Department to be funded from proceeds of the police impound special projects fund.
Can someone tell me why we need a motorcycle?
Having a motorcycle would give us the use of like school zones right now. Northwood School, Wilson School, we can't even get in those areas during pickups. If we, if we set it like Mel Phillips and Wrangler, whichever, everybody complains about people blowing the stoplights there, when we sit there, they see the police cars. They, we don't, we don't catch the people doing it. You put a motorcycle there, we catch them. School buses, when they run the stop signs at school buses, it gives us a little bit of, of resources for that, for a little more traffic control in those situations. It's another vehicle that just gives us a lot more traffic control in those situations.
Thank you. I'd like to say that I've seen a lot of improvement in our police force since Chief Hanson has taken charge. And I had an opportunity to see them in action and they did a very professional and safe job. I hate motorcycles. Motorcycles are, there's thirty-four percent more accidents on a motorcycle than there is in motor, in other motor vehicles. My personal opinion is bleeding through on this. I think that, in all respects, sir, I think that people who ride motorcycles are great people, just like the rest of us, but for some reason, they have suspended a part of their concern for their families and relatives and friends because of that high rate of accident. Who, I've just worked in the ER too much. And brain surgeons and neurosurgeons, well, I was giving a speech one time or a talk and he said, how many of you are going to buy a motorcycle for one of your kids for Christmas? And Hanson went up and he said, I want to thank you in advance for the income that I'm about to receive, just because of the high incidence of accidents. And I think we're asking for that. I'd like to look for an alternative to the motorcycle. Because I love our chief and our police officers, and I am concerned about their safety.
I can assure you, whoever rides it will be wearing a helmet.
Oh, it's not the helmet. That's, and I'm sure that they'll be a safe driver, and I'm sure that they'll be very careful. But a motorcycle can hide, and a rider can hide completely behind the post in your car and you don't see them. One of the things that happens to motorcycles is someone opens a car door and hits them, pulls out from a parking space because they haven't seen them. Most motorcycle accidents aren't the fault of the rider. Most motorcycle accidents are a result of patch gravel where it shouldn't be, unexpected, other motor vehicles running into them, knocking over. I don't know if I have enough right to, she's raising her hand, is that something?
I'm going to move acceptance.
Do we have qualified people to drive the motorcycles?
I believe we do, sir. We have people that are motorcycle riders, ride on a regular basis. You know, there's many agencies that use motorcycles because they're proven to work. It's a proven law enforcement entity that does work. There will be training involved through, through the course of time for whoever's allowed to use these motorcycles. There will be training involved. It's just something that I, that I believe does work, and I believe it's a resource that will work for us.
Second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Chris Anderson?
Yes.
Dee Patterson?
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert?
Yes.
Larry Church?
I reserve the right to say I told you so.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Bill Wollman?
Yes.
Cory Crabtree?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item nine, consideration and possible action regarding an agreement with Seminole State College to provide public swimming access to the indoor pool at Seminole State College.
So, we, I, I think we've got a verbal understanding with the college on providing swimming space for our public. Pending your approval under this item, we would pay the college ten thousand dollars for the time of June. And then after the next fiscal year begins, we will pay them another ten thousand dollars from July first to August first. The hours will be one to six daily. I think that's, I think that's five days a week or six days a week. I don't recall, but it's six days a week. We'll call it six days a week. And from the time of ten AM to noon, we will have the ability for lessons, swimming lessons. So the caveat on this is that they do have what they call upward bound. And that is, I think every, I think it's three, two or three weeks out of the summer. And those people need to have access at the same time our public is swimming from three thirty to five during the time, the weeks that they are here. I did not see that as an issue. They have agreed to allow us to have concessions. The gate and the concessions will be with us. So our plan has always been to utilize the concessions as part of the, of the compensation for the pool manager. And so we should, we're in good shape there. I think the hours are almost exactly what we did have before. So it's really the twenty thousand dollars in lease expense, which frankly is about what we were spending in water and chemical before we closed our pool. So our exposure on this would be the twenty thousand lease fee and also for the wages during that period to hire the lifeguards. So I'm thinking probably in the neighborhood of twenty-one thousand dollars for the expenditure on the salaries, the wages. All total, we're going to be looking at forty-one thousand dollars to provide swimming to the public during the summer. And I'll be glad to answer any questions. Of course, if you agree to this, we will go to Atlanta and we'll paper it up. But I wouldn't want to go much further until I have you guys' blessing to get into the actual papering.
Did I hear you say that this is about the same amount that we were paying to man, to run the pool before?
Yes.
And that pool has been shut down for one, two seasons?
Two seasons, uh-huh.
So we've saved eighty-two thousand dollars. As soon as eighty-two thousand, we haven't spent for the pool. I'm just trying to break...
Your math is like my wife shopping at Dillard's.
Exactly. I'm trying to put a pretty bow on this because I like for us to have a, a swimming opportunity for children.
Are we charging to get in? Is that going to offset some of the cost?
That's entirely up to you guys, yes. My plan would be to charge to get in. Now, you, you all will set the gate fee with the understanding that we're not going to charge upward bound. Their students are paying separately to the college, so, but anybody else would pay a gate fee.
How about those folks who are, whose parents are on disability? Or I guess we could go to the school and find out what children that attend school are low-income, whatever that's called. Five bucks to someone who's living on seven hundred and forty dollars a month is a lot of money.
Have we done that? I don't think we've done that in the past.
No, you haven't. I'm proposing that we do that. That we give consideration to folks who can, kids who can, whose parents can demonstrate that they're, say, below the poverty line or wherever we want to draw a line for them. Because I'd rather see those kids in effect being babysat at the pool than roaming on the streets and getting in the mist.
We don't want babysitters. I mean, we had, we had to implement rules, and I would suggest that we implement the same rules that we had for our pool to prevent that. We don't, I mean, you get into a deal where you've got young kids coming to that pool and our, our, our lifeguards are not babysitters. They're there to save lives, and when you get too many little kids that they're acting babysitting, it becomes a nature situation.
Well, let's put a cap on the number of children that, the number of occupants.
No, they have to have someone that we supervise them with.
Well, that's...
Below a certain age, we cannot take that responsibility.
Well, that's good. I'm all for that.
I mean, it's a...
I, I just used the wrong term.
We, we, yeah, we ran into that problem where we had little kids there with no supervision, no parents, no way to get a hold of anybody. They'd drop them off, they have no food, no water, which, yeah, it just becomes a situation that the city shouldn't, shouldn't be undergoing. I mean, we should be taking that responsibility.
I agree with that. I just, I think that what that does is it points out a, it's another need in our community. And that's something that we could address a different way.
But a swimming pool is not a safe situation to address that need.
I agree with you.
Along that liability, what does our insurance, in power we involve that?
Cory can probably answer this. We probably have a little bit better situation than that we've got the junior college and then we have our, our insurance carrier. I'm just going to have to take a look at it. I haven't looked at that at all.
I mean, instead of having a public pool, you just move a pool to a different location. I mean, it would almost be the same as if you had public pool. The only problem is, I'm sure the college didn't agree with, probably, you will sign the whole harmless agreements because it's not, it's not their problem that we have, we rented the space, but if they...
I imagine there's...
...call or something because of something they did on our time, that would be on our dollar.
And they may have their own set of rules, and we may have to follow along with ours. One thing, I mean, if this is going to be for the summer, I mean, we're signing for both months period, or is it something if we find we're not getting the use because it's indoors, you know, we have a handful of people every day, but we want to do that second ten thousand dollars in dollar? Come on, please. I mean, you know, I'm all for it. I want something for it.
Yeah, so...
But I want to make sure that we don't just...
Yeah, that, that was not discussed. I will say that it's next fiscal year that you're obligating ten thousand dollars for. I will say that it's next fiscal year that you're obligating ten thousand dollars for. So I don't think technically, yeah, I think we're, we're going to be okay on that. Now, whether or not that's something I would want to do to them is a different animal because I, I would expect, or suspect probably is a better term, that they'll, they'll do some maintenance that they may have postponed, thinking that we're coming. They'll make, buy a new diving board or new ladders or things that they were anticipating that income coming through. I don't know that I really want to hang them with that.
I get that. I'm fine with that.
I think if they put in their agreement that at any given point if they decide this isn't the right fit for them, that they want out, maybe that would be the point at which we could ask for one out for us as well.
Yeah.
We did have, we did have lots of family rates for yearly passes. I would recommend that we, that we make the agreement with the same rate structure and the same rules that we have with our own, that we have with our own pool.
I'd like to suggest the family rates for the families that are low income.
Steve, what's the capacity of this state college pool?
I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head. Mike, do you recall? We went out there and looked at it for several hours and I, I don't know the answer to that, but it's a bunch. I mean, we, I don't think there'll ever be a case where we need to worry about it being too full.
What was the capacity of the group? Do you remember what that was?
Forty-five years.
Four, probably. I mean, at least you know it from math.
It was probably, the college is, what was it about, maybe two-thirds the size of four hours a month?
Yes.
It wasn't quite as big. How many could we have to?
At the old pool?
Yeah.
Five fifty?
Yeah, five fifty. Probably.
I, I think I've distracted us from what we're aggressing, from bringing up the rates. When will that be set? How, how does that work? How do you determine what to charge if we don't, if we don't determine it today?
Right. Well, what I would have done in this case is just continue to do what we had in place. So however, you always have the ability to, to adjust the rates. You're the, you're the ultimate bosses, so.
Is that an issue that should come back before the council? Or is that an issue we should settle today?
Yeah, so we're, we're hoping to have this available June the first. And the big caveat in this is if we can find lifeguards. We're way late in the game. Atlanta, bless her heart, has agreed to put on a training, a Red Cross sponsored lifeguard training prior to us opening the pool. And that's a big deal. It is a big deal. So hopefully we can get a few of the young people, the lifeguards, enrolled in that. If they're not already certified or need to be recertified, we can get them in under this. So I don't know that I answered your question, but the, we're going to kick this off June one if we can find the lifeguards. And I don't anticipate us having a, well, we're gonna, we're not going to have to have another special council meeting until June. We need to know now.
Okay. Then I know that we go forward with this with the same rate structure and et cetera, et cetera, that we had before with a consideration to reduce the rates for children and families that have low income.
Do you have a rate in mind?
No, I have no idea what you charge. Five bucks is what I thought of.
Who's going to determine that, though?
Well, I mean, you can look at, there's lots of ways to find out who these folks are.
I don't, I don't want to be the one responsible for finding out if they provided any true information or not.
Five dollars, twelve, about three dollars.
Well-
Family.
I think that probably the school system has a record of folks that, children who come and receive special meals or whatever and they, and the parents had to produce some sort of proof.
Sharon, would you, would you tell them that what you just said, the, the cost that we had prior to the other pool?
Adults, twelve and up are five dollars a day. Children under twelve are three dollars a day and a family passes seventy-five dollars.
Good. I know that don't sound much like a match. I mean, I probably have that much in my pocket. But people who live on seven hundred and forty-five dollars a month, the cheapest I've been able to find, and I'm sensitive to this because I have managed money for those folks, for some of them that can't manage their own money. You take seven hundred and forty-five dollars and the cheapest rent that I can find was bills paid because, remember, these folks don't manage their money well, so they can't put up deposits, et cetera, et cetera. So I have to rent something for them that's bills paid. Just a small room like a motel room is five hundred and fifty dollars and that's at a discount because I begged for the discount. That leaves them, when you total all that out, they've got less than a hundred dollars a week to live on. So five bucks is a lot. You know, because that's just their housing. You think about, because they have to pay, spend on food. And we do a great job. We've got a good food pantry, a marvelous job for the underprivileged in our community. But any way you cut it, you know, bar sub costs what? A sack of groceries costs what? You know?
I'll amend my motion to, to keep the rate fees and cut the family, the season passes at half and then keep all the other stuff the same.
It's a good start. I like that. Thank you.
I was just going to say, that's probably a good idea because we have to create criteria and somebody's going to have to approve it and verify it and that would be our administrative nightmare. So setting a rate is the best way in my mind to do that. Make it easy on the staff.
Oh, well, the little committee can look at this for next year.
I'll second Chris's motion.
Please. I'll throw you.
Real call, please, Janet.
Chris Anson?
Yes.
Dee Patterson?
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Tim Hopland?
Yes.
Cory Crabtree?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item ten, consideration and possible action regarding potential renovation of the Herb Gunter Municipal Pool.
Quite taking it possible to renovate.
Well-
Do you have a replacement?
Yeah.
Yes.
Put up a plastic liner?
I'm going in unbiased. The, it's, it's been said, and I'm sure you've received phone calls about the fact that why don't we just patch it a little bit and, and move on? It's, it'll be much less expensive to the taxpayers. Well, the firm that we hired to do the site location and the preliminary footprint of a new pool versus the old pool, they came to the conclusion that it would be just as expensive. However, they did not provide any backup documentation. So it's been suggested, and I think it's, it's a good idea, that before we go to the taxpayers, we really need to have answers on exactly how much is this going to cost to repair. I think we learned a lot in the, in the high school elections, that old structures cost a lot to repair, but we really don't know. You know, I can sit here and tell you with a degree of confidence that there's a void under the, under the pool because we've seen the sand, we've seen the evidence. But I can't tell you if that void is an inch and a half or if it's eighty feet. So one of the things that I think is necessary in order to be able to take this to the voters and, and them have confidence in what we're telling them is some background information. So we're going to ask you to set aside some funds. This will be non-budgeted money, probably coming out of a, what we call the non-bonded accounts, to actually do bores through the concrete, shoot camera work, put a camera into different lines, into the voids that we think are, are there. There'll be radar invested in that. And so what we're talking about, you probably have seen some of the oil field technology where they can do radars and-
Ground penetrating.
Ground, thank you. That's exactly what it's called. Ground penetrating radar and also some sound testing. So we've got firms available to us. I just want permission from you all to proceed before you see bills come across the table. I didn't want you to think, now, wait a minute, why are we wasting money on something that we've already decided we're not going to repair? This is simply a precursor and who knows? We may come back after we get evidence and say, look, for a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, we can repair the pipes and for two hundred and sixteen thousand, we can fill in the void under the pool and coat the pool for another two hundred. So a million dollars, we can have a functioning pool. We don't know. And that, I think that's the questions that we have to answer for the voters prior to going and asking them for a new structure.
So Steve was very kind. I was the one that requested that because I feel that, yeah. In the fact that sometimes we don't provide all the information that maybe our citizens should have. They should know if it's going to cost five hundred thousand dollars, a million dollars, two million dollars, because they're probably going to be voting on it. And if we don't give them that information, you know, can they, if all they have is something new presented, they don't really know the whole story. So I'm not sure what this might cost. That, that's still yet to be determined on what, to have them come out and do an evaluation. But, you know, this is part of what I believe where we can do better in transparency is having some numbers. And the second company may come back and say, it's not worth spending any money on. And that will be two firms.
I currently agree no more after going through that high school.
Yeah, exactly.
There's no sense in dividing the account of our swimming pool all over again.
So what I would request, this likely, every answer we get is likely going to need two or three other questions answered. So it'll, it'll definitely raise questions. This thing will spider. I suspect at this point, we're going to need around twenty thousand dollars to answer the things that I know need to be answered. But I would ask that you approve not to exceed forty-five thousand dollars, just so that I don't have to break stride and these companies continue to do their work if we need more answers. So that would be my ask in this, is you appropriate not to exceed forty-five thousand dollars to get answers on the cost of renovating the Herb Gunter Municipal Pool.
So that's going to come out of your budget?
It'll be non-bu, yes, non-budgeted, yes.
Can we have that, Shane?
Good job, Mr. Mayor.
Well, you haven't voted on it yet.
I know, but it brings it up.
Let me make a motion preceded by this. When I was Bishop of Eau Claire, we had a conference center that had a swimming pool that ran into roughly the same problem we've got here. And the question was, is this something we can repair or must we replace it? And we had to find out the answer because it made a lot of difference cost wise. The answer was, what we needed to do was fill in the old pool and let it with, but we had to run the tests and everything. So I moved that we authorize up to forty-five thousand dollars to do this study.
Back at that. Real call, please, Janet.
Chris Anson?
Yes.
Dee Patterson?
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Tim Hopland?
Yes.
Bill Watland?
Yes.
Cory Crabtree?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item eleven, consideration and possible action regarding the future options of a public pool aquatic center.
So the good Lord has intervened and, and we've got a technical glitch. So apparently, we're going to do this study prior to really showing the public what we're talking about in terms of future new pools. You guys, the city council was delivered packets that were completed last year and this was all presented at a previous city council meeting. There were several pool plans that included nice water slides. Again, we had a great PowerPoint, but this isn't going to work today, so. But it, it did include really nice slides, great swimming areas. Some of the plans included lap pool areas and also shallow water and some events.
We can have it on the website by the end of the week.
Okay. We, Sharon says that we'll provide that on the website if anyone's interested. Go on there, the, the price is stamped right on it. Several of them are things that have been done recently, but I can give you a range and it just depends on how many slides, how deep your pool is, how many square feet the pool will be. The price range would be somewhere between one point seven and five point seven million dollars. So there are at least four different variations that kind of increase in price from one point seven. One point seven is, is pretty basic, but it definitely gets us in the swimming business. I will also tell you that we've got some rough numbers. I don't have this on the PowerPoint, but we can also provide this to the council at a later time for the property tax increase that would be looked at for various areas. And I've got that broken down into what it would mean for a fifty thousand dollar home, a hundred thousand dollar home per year. So it, it's pretty good information and, you know, some of it is expensive, some of it is somewhat affordable. Well, we'll bring this back to you in June and hopefully by then we'll have some preliminary information on our refurbishment of the Herb Gunter Pool. And then we'll, we'll have a better, we'll, we'll definitely be running the PowerPoint by then. And we'll start making some decisions, you guys will, in terms of are we ready to go to the boat? This design is kind of what we would like to see for our citizens. And in the meantime, I think it'll be a good idea if we go ahead and have one more pool meeting with the advisory committee. And we'll, we'll let you know when that is going to be. Thank you for volunteering, Mrs. Davis. So we'll, there'll be some heavy lifting between now and then, but you guys will have all the information in front of you. And we look forward to having a swimming pool, hopefully soon. I won't say next swimming year, but definitely that would be one of the targets that we would try to hit, at least some swimming next summer.
Guess I'll have to learn how to swim.
Yes, we do need to know how the swimming pool-
Do we need to table this?
Yes.
Motion to table.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Chris Anson?
Yes.
Dee Patterson?
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Tim Hopland?
Yes.
Bill Watland?
Yes.
Cory Crabtree?
Yes.
Motion to table passes.
Item twelve, consideration and possible action to approve the commercial service order in agreement with Suddenlink to provide telephone and internet services to city facilities, including city hall, emergency services and public works.
So not all of the ideas that we come up with work the way that we hope that they will. You will recall that we left AT&amp;T several years ago. Their bills were just outrageous and they were getting even more so. And we decided to go out with Nobel, who was a provider, and, and then we piggybacked their service on the RSI here locally. And, well, we're, we're not pleased. There had been times where our nine-one-one service was down completely. There are a lot of occasions, multiple times, that we will have all the phones at the fire department and police department and city hall will be down. We just, we've come to the realization it's not going to be reliable enough for what we think the public deserves. Our alternative plan is to go to Suddenlink. Suddenlink will not provide all the savings that we had anticipated through Nobel, but it would be right in between. I would say halfway in between. I think we were thinking eighty, eighty-one thousand dollar savings from AT&amp;T to the Nobel plan. And I think we're probably going to be about halfway between that with the Suddenlink. So it'll be a forty-two thousand dollar increase over the Nobel plan, but it's still forty-two thousand dollars less than what we were paying for AT&amp;T. And it's a much more reliable service we're promised. They have a lot of technical support that we think is going to be a huge help for us. There's a lot of fiber that, that we have access to that's going to make it a lot better positively.
It's a good thing we saved that eighty-two thousand dollars on the bill.
For two years, yeah.
A hundred and sixty something thousand.
And Chris, we looked at the contract and had to put the rider on it and we sent that over there and they've agreed to the, to the rider for our budget year. So we've got a, an out twelve months. Don't budget this again.
Real call, please, Janet.
Chris Anson?
Yes.
Dee Patterson?
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Tim Hopland?
Yes.
Bill Watland?
Yes.
Cory Crabtree?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item thirteen, consideration and possible action to approve waiving the five dollar garage sale permit fee during the annual citywide garage sale scheduled for June seventh and eighth, two thousand nineteen.
No, it's approved.
Second.
Roll call.
Chris Anson?
Yes.
Dee Patterson?
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Tim Hopland?
Yes.
Bill Watland?
Yes.
Cory Crabtree?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item fourteen, consideration and possible action to approve the Chamber of Commerce's annual request, request to host an Independence Festival in Municipal Park on July third.
No, it's approved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Chris Anson?
Yes.
Dee Patterson?
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Tim Hopland?
Yes.
Bill Watland?
Yes.
I think we should clarify, they still have to get a permit. We just don't charge deferments on that garage sale, right?
That was a yes?
Yes.
Item fifteen, consideration and possible action to approve the Family Resource Center's annual request to use the community room for their summer camp during the month of June at the reduced rate of four hundred dollars.
No to approve.
Wait, wait a minute, I don't think that's correct, Paul Reddick. I think it was for a reduction in the four hundred dollars on what you normally pays out, correct?
That is correct, but because you approved remodeling of that room, our timeframe is June third through the end of last day of June. So if we're not going to be able to use that because of repairs, then we need to consider that also. And part of that price at one point included the pool. I think that four hundred dollars is probably not including that. So that's also something that we need to consider.
I withdraw my motion.
So when, when are the repairs to be completed? We won't know that until we contact, they were just approved. So we won't know that until I talk to them.
Yeah, we've got to get the estimates from the flooring company. I don't know how we're going to do that.
Does it have to be done before your event, the floor?
It was just approved today.
Yeah, but are you anticipating that it might be done before July first?
Yes, I told them it had to be done before July first and they said that's fine. But I just don't have a date yet.
And Yuri, did it end this week?
July.
June third, June twenty-seventh.
June, the month of June, four days a week.
So that really may mean that that would need to be done in next year's budget then, instead of this year's, if we have to delay it.
Do you have an alternative location?
We have made as many contacts as possible to try to find a location large enough to fit thirty-five to forty kids. It's usually what we host in an area where the reason the community center works so well for us is because we have Boomtown, we have Splash Pad, so many different things that we can do right there. There is not a location in Seminole that we can, we cannot transport. So therefore, we need that centralized location without making them walk from the City Citizen Center or somewhere.
Carl, I could get the armory for you if you need it. Would that work?
That will work.
I got it, I'll take care of that as a backup if we can do it.
We'll have, we'll have a day at the theater, a day at the wellness center. I mean, there's alternatives, we could use the bridge, but to get the whole month, we weren't able to do that. I think one or two of our days, we were on hold waiting for Seminole State Pool. This is why we didn't get those calls back.
We've got a meeting tonight at six o'clock if you can, if you could come to the armory.
Okay.
Somebody and we can take care of it.
At the armory?
At the armory.
Carry on, my crawl to the song.
Thank you, Carl. Well, so the question is, we don't need this.
Yeah, there would be no action if we're going to wait on that.
Motion, no action, we take it. Okay, move on.
I like that.
All right, reports. Well, first I want to say thank you to those that serve on all of the committees that we have to help the city run and operate. We need all of those volunteers, we need good volunteers, we need volunteers that are willing to show up when meetings are called. And I want to thank everyone for that. I also want to thank others that are willing to serve on, on special committees or that we have. You know, that just helps the city operate a lot smoother. And it provides, I think, for a community to come together to fill a need, to solve problems. It just makes it better for everyone. And so thank you for everyone that is doing that. I don't know about you guys, but I'm tired of rain. If we could vote to stop the rain for a while, I would love someone to make that motion. But I know mowing is a problem right now for a lot of people. So hopefully, we'll slide a little bit on any fines or tickets we might write until we kind of dry up a little bit. I haven't had any complaints, but, you know, just kind of throwing that out because it's very difficult right now to mow. That's really all I have, so, city manager?
I just want to say congratulations to our Seminole State softball team heading to Nationals in Utah and to the boys also, the young men that did well in their regional. They didn't make the trip to Nationals, but our girls did. That was a cool event. If you didn't get to make it out there, that, there were hundreds and hundreds of people out at our softball fields there across from Seminole State Campus. Neat deal, tons of local volunteers running the gate, the concession, tickets, all of that, selling T-shirts. It was neat to see our community rally around our college and support them in the way we do. Just a reminder, we're going to have the council is going to be breaking up into small groups and doing the hard lifting, the heavy lifting, the working out of budget. This is Jay's most wonderful time of the year. Yeah, so if you haven't scheduled your time with the small groups, please get with Donna. I think she's, she's parceling that out to make sure everybody has a chance to chime in on the budget. And then we'll be looking at the capital improvements here very soon as well. You're accustomed to seeing the whole ask list and we'll be going through that again. I don't, I never actually ran the total, but I'm sure the ask is about forty million dollars and we don't have forty million dollars to spend. So you guys will be trimming that down into something workable that our citizens will be served best from. I will tell you that we're seeing progress on the air ambulance service. We've got several that are interested in the call volume. I want to point out that Bryant Baker and our hospital ER staff have done great, great work in helping us recruit a good service for our people. And we're really encouraged by what we're seeing. And I would not be surprised if we don't have an aircraft, helicopter in Seminole in the next several months, so. And congratulations to all the moms and dads that got graduates going off tonight. You got them there, finally, all right? So I know what that means, congratulations, that's all I've got, Mayor.
City attorney?
I usually don't promote anything, but the American Legion is having their first annual golf tournament, July sixth. And every bit of the proceeds go right back into the community. So they don't keep anything, it's for scholarships, boys state, you name it. So if anybody wants to, to help those guys out, field the team and, or come out and help, that would be a, I'm sure they won't turn the, the help down. Dee Dee, can you play still?
Contact Gary yet.
Contact Gary Adams or myself, we'll hook you up.
Remarks and inquiries of council members, Ward four, Chris Anson?
I want to thank everybody for coming out at this special time. I kind of thought when we moved it, we'd be a little, we've done about the same amount of things, guys.
Dee Dee Patterson?
I'd like to thank our staff, our staff city, they're great. You never hear a negative complaint. I have not heard anything in the last several years and that's great, they do a great job. Also, have we looked into the west fence of the cemetery? Where will we add on that and how much more would it cost us to put wrought iron fence in like what happened in the front?
Right. So that is on the list for the council to discuss. That's on, there are a multitude of things that are on that board that we're going to talk about, Dee Dee, in the budget sessions.
Well, I'd like to see the option of having a wrought iron fence on that side. I think that would beautify that area tremendously.
Okay, we'll see what we can do about getting an estimate and the adjustment will be made on the, on the ask board.
Ward three, Cory Crabtree?
Just real quick, I'll second what Larry said about the chief of the stabbing. I had a situation without going into much detail that happened in my own front yard. That it's kind of a weird sequence of events and one just happened to drive by and he was, just noticed something that was, that looked odd and turned around and came back and actually, there were some drugs that were taken from that. And I'm actually, I'm applauding you because he actually turned around and took care of the situation, didn't just drive on and thinking, and that's just something that maybe someone just stayed in there. He actually took the initiative to turn around and investigate it and, you know, didn't like happening in my neighborhood, but I did like the fact that they did take care of it, so I appreciate it.
Tim Poplin?
I have another question.
Ward two, Stephanie? Ward one, Bill Wollman? Okay, we're done. Oh, I guess Larry?
That's my stomach, Ron. I think some of the time that me going on about women and girls and women, single women with children. And the inequity of women in the workforce, some of that is misunderstood. So I just want to say a fact about women in the workforce. They comprise forty-seven percent of our present workforce. They make eighty percent of what men make at the same, doing the same work. And often, these women are raising a family without a man's support. I just want for people to keep that in mind. And also keep in mind that the rate of equalization is such that it'll be about two hundred years at the present rate. Someone told me this morning, said, well, it's, it's improving. Yes, it is improving, but it's going to be two hundred years at the present rate before women will receive equal pay. And I'd like to commend our police force and all the people that are involved here. Everyone does a fantastic job. My experience on this council has been a wonderful experience for me to see how dedicated and how thorough this city is announced. Thank you.
All right, with that, would I entertain the motion for adjournment?
So moved.
On to you. Those opposed, considered.
Thank you, Ms. Sharon.